Good afternoon, everyone. It's five o'clock on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the St. Croix County Board of Supervisors. We'll move ahead with our invocation. We're fortunate enough to have Tim Seka with us again today.
Thank you, Chairman Bob Lung. I've noticed something. When I'm up here, you don't run the clock, do you? I don't have that two to three minutes. Because I was thinking of reading the whole Declaration of Independence for you, but, you know, seeing as how we are approaching just a couple of days away from July 4th, and the Declaration of Independence is such a bedrock of who we are, and the freedoms and the liberties, and how we conduct our government, and those kind of things. I just wanted to, something interesting, I just want to quickly highlight two people that signed the Declaration of Independence that most people don't really know. You always think of the big names like Jefferson and Hancock, and that. George With was a man from Virginia. He was a lawyer, not only a lawyer, but he was a law professor at William &amp; Mary University. And two of his main students that he adopted very close to him were Thomas Jefferson and James Monroe, who went on to be a couple of our early presidents. George With's time as a lawyer was marked by his, he had a hallmark of honesty. He actually had a case one time where he had taken the fee from the plaintiff to represent him in court, and when he found out the plaintiff wasn't going to play by the rules, and that he dropped the case with the plaintiff, gave his money back, and two of his colleagues, George's colleagues, kind of chided him in saying, "Well, you know, you can always bend the law a little bit, just to win the case and make some money." And George just thought that was the most preposterous thing that he had ever heard. So he was, so he was one of the signers from Virginia. The other person I wanted to highlight was John Witherspoon. He was from New Jersey, and he was a Presbyterian minister. And so, as George was a lawyer, there were 27 lawyers that signed the declaration, so just about half, and there was only one minister that signed. And, no, there's not a joke coming in there anywhere. But, but he was also a professor, and he was the chief lecturer at the College of New Jersey, which later became known as Princeton. And one of his main principal students was James Madison, who helped mainly to write the Constitution and also became a president. Between these two men, one being a law professor and one being a divinity professor, they were responsible for the training of dozens of our early senators, representatives, and judges, many who went on to become either a president or a vice president or a chief justice. And so, the influence that these two men had on their students was immense for who we are now and what we had as a beginning. And, and both of them had a couple of scriptural guidelines for their life. The lawyer George With had two scripture references that were kind of his foundation, both from Proverbs 29, where it says, "It is from the Lord that man gets justice." And so, George With believed that our laws came from God's laws, because man can't give another man the justice they deserve. George believed in the scripture that says God does that. And then, he also believed this from Proverbs 29:27, that the righteous detest the dishonest, which goes back to the honesty that George With had in his profession. John Witherspoon had a guiding principle from 1 Timothy, Chapter 2, where it says that, that the urgency for us as citizens and believers is that we make requests, we make prayers, and intercession, and thanksgiving for all those in authority over us, and it keeps life in a peaceful way, to pray for those in authority, because the people who are in authority over us are actually an instrument that God has established. So my encouragement to you in all of this is to use these ideas to, in the institution of this board and many other committees and things that you have going on, whether it's in your business or your profession, if you will use that to guide us, the citizens, and make life peaceful and orderly and honest. We could ask that of you, and we ask that you do your best in doing that. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the history of our nation as we come annually to this time, where there was a declaration where these 56 men and their families put everything on the line. They made, they made a huge risk in declaring their independence, and whether it was finances, or health, or property, they sacrificed much. And here we are today. It reminds me of how you called your disciples to follow you, and how much they gave up. They gave up everything to follow you, and you made it worth their while. So anyone who is willing to offer themselves and sacrifice much for your honor and for the people of our county, our nation, our state, we ask that you would reward them for their sacrifice and what they give of their time and all of their effort. And we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. Before we get started with public comment, we do have a couple of people who would like to comment on the health campus. I want to make a couple of comments on that, introductory comments, if I may, which I was going to share with the board at the end of the meeting, but I'll do that now instead. We are going to embark, so to speak, on a due diligence analysis of the health campus. And what does that mean? Really, nothing more than, it's been probably eight, nine, maybe close to 10 years since we had our new facility. And it's, it's really looking back on what were our expectations at the time, what were our intentions, have we fulfilled those intentions, have we met those expectations, where are we at today, and what direction are we going? So it's a pretty simple process. It's nothing different than what we, we might also apply to other services within the county that we provide, just doing an analysis to make sure that we're know, we're up to date, and we know that we're fulfilling what our intentions are. Are there plans to sell the health campus? No. Okay, will that be, or should that be part of the analysis? Well, of course it should be, because it's not a mandatory service. Where that will go, I have no idea. There are no preconceived notions on what that would include, but we really wouldn't be doing our due diligence if we didn't include that as part of the conversation. And in having that conversation, I also want to say, obviously, we would have that conversation with all the respect and compassion toward our employees who do a fabulous job, and the residents, and all the citizens of the county. And that should go without saying, but I'm going to point that out anyhow. And I also want to clarify that this analysis was initiated by me, okay, solely by me, so I take full responsibility for starting this analysis. I spoke with Administrator Witt a couple of months ago, just to kind of get the ball rolling. And as a county board, I hope you would agree, it's really our job to be kind of visionary, and we do that. We're building this fabulous building expansion so that we can properly service our citizens for another 30-plus years. We do a capital improvement plan over five years, so that we're always looking ahead on what we have coming up. And this isn't really that much different. So I don't want people to read between the lines, or think there's any kind of a hidden agenda. This is a very transparent policy, or process. And so, as we go through this, I just ask for your patience, because we really haven't gotten hardly started yet, so. But, and trust the process. And unfortunately, I wanted to make those comments, because there also was a unfortunate and somewhat misleading social media post that I felt kind of inclined to make sure that I addressed this issue as well, and I wanted to make sure everybody was aware that we're going to start this analysis fairly shortly. So, for those of you who are going to comment tonight on the health campus, we certainly always value your feedback. I just ask that you take into consideration my introductory comments. So we're going to start out with Chris Libby. Chris?
Well, thank you for your comments. I am not in favor of selling the county health center, if that does become your conclusion, for the following reasons. The move of for-profit nursing and assisted living facilities towards private pay only, thus excluding Medicaid-funded patients. An example, our house Senior Living in Richmond, in a memo dated May 5th of 2023, to the family of one of their residents, giving that resident, or their family, a 60-day notice to vacate. Due to the ensuing uproar that occurred, the notice to vacate was rescinded for patients of record, but with no new Medicaid patients being accepted. Our aging population, many of whom are living with limited financial resources qualifying them for Medicaid. The non-binding referenda of 2008 and 2012, which at the time clearly demonstrated the will of St. Croix County residents, in support of a bond, to construct and operate the current St. Croix County Health Center. And lastly, the social obligation that we have as a society to provide adequate resources for both our senior citizens and individuals of all ages requiring institutional care. Thank you. And just a quick P.S., the county fair is around the corner. Hope to see many of you there.
Thank you. Okay, Travis Shatner? Travis?
Hello, everybody. It's been a while since I've been up here. I understand there's an assessment coming, and the process has just started. However, as someone who has been through the, the last time this was all done, and there was a hoopla, I feel that there needs to be some facts stated. One thing is that that nursing home, in some way, shape, or form, has existed since 1897. According to the Wisconsin Historical Society, which I'm going to be reading off quite a bit of this, it was established in 1897, and 1898 was moved to poor housing and added grounds for mentally ill and indigent people. In 1917, there, there was the addition of what people remember, if you're old enough, of the county farm. That was an add-on to the whole thing. What I learned recently was, the state regulations, changes in state regulations is what ended the county farm. The people, patients were no longer allowed to work on the farm, and that is why. It had nothing to do with a bunch of other stuff that people thought was going on, that it was voluntary, that they wanted to get out. It was a state regulation that made it so it was illegal for patients to work on the farm. The current property as it sits has been there since 1977. And the grounds that we, that we've built, that I worked on helping getting approved, and where it's at now, has been a proud representation of the county's values in investing in its people. Just to give you an idea of how long 1897 was, under God, and in God we trust on our money, has only been part of our official pledge and honor money since 1950. We have been through multiple world wars, and still fought to defend that county nursing home. We want to make sure that everyone that is in need can get their needs met, and that is a big thing, and why I'm very proud that we were able to move forward with the building of the new structure and maintaining its financial viability. Thank you.
Kim Dupree?
Thank you for your time. I sent an email earlier today, so thank you for your time in advance in reviewing some of that historical information, as I was part of the group all along in this same conversation. That shirt I'm wearing tonight is to show the two-to-one support that we got in the, both of the referendums. They have 66 on the back here, the 66% of people, one during a very heavily Democratic election, one during a heavily Republican primary. As always, my understanding that there's a real limit to the number of nursing home beds allowed in the state of Wisconsin, partially to control their Medicaid costs. And so, when they are up for sale, or whatever, you know, they may end up somewhere else, and it may not always be Medicaid. And this really hit home with me when I went to the Hudson Methodist Church back in 2008 to talk, to listen to Dan Goodyear from Christian Community Homes. I specifically asked him, "How many Medicaid patients do you serve?" And he wouldn't answer my question. Instead, he kept talking about all the rehab services they could provide, and the Club Med mentality and atmosphere that they wanted to have. And I was very distressed by that, because when living in Emerald for 20 years that I did, I came across many farmers in the eastern part of our county who were very supportive of the county nursing home, because they wanted to know that it would be there for them in case they ever really needed it. And when some supervisors wouldn't honor the voice of the people after two referendums, our citizen-led group held them to account, and we turned over seats in 2012 and in 2014 to a supermajority of nursing home supporters. And that included ousting the county board chair, Daryl Standifer, at the time, whose district voted overwhelmingly in support of the county nursing home. So for those of you who might doubt the voice of the people, they take this very seriously. They expect their supervisors to be their representatives, not to be their rulers and tell them what to do or what's best. And after two overwhelmingly supportive public referendums, I would hope that any discussion about the nursing home would have been, be done in full public view, all parties at the table, HHS and nursing home staff. I would think you owe the public at least that. And just as a side note, if you're going to bet against the people of New Richmond, just remember, last summer, they pushed out the largest biogas digester company in Europe. And I don't know about you, but I wouldn't want to mess with them, because when it comes to the county nursing home, they've got a lot of supporters in the rest of the county. We do have a Facebook page out there. Encourage you to join and follow along. Thank you. Keep St. Croix, keep St. Croix County Nursing Home. That's the name of the Facebook page. Thank you.
Okay, and we have Dave, I hope I get your last name right, Dave. Kroski? Am I close?
Yeah, I agree with all the rest of the speakers, that everything is, a lot of this, what I was going to say would be echoed, but you had two very strongly supported referendums in the whole county to build a nursing home. The people of the county wanted a nursing home that they could use if they needed it. And I think that's a strong voice from the whole county, that it was, everybody needed it. You've got a wonderful facility up there, and I'd like it to stay there the way it is.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Any other public comment? Public comment. Okay, we will move on to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda? Motion to approve by Supervisor Burning, Second Supervisor Osnas. And we're ready to vote on approving the consent agenda. Okay, that motion passes, approved. Thank you. And we're going to move on to our financial update. County Administrator Witt?
Yeah, I don't know if you could bring up the packet, Christine. Page 80 of the county board packet is where I was going to start with the financial report. What you're seeing there is the vehicle registration fee collection. You can see that ramping up as we've hit full collection for a full month now. And then, a little bit further down, last month I had pointed out the very low month we had, and then the following month was our fifth highest month ever. So, I don't disregard everything I said last month, I guess, about here comes a recession. But, it is something to watch. You know, when you average it out, we're about on track where we were last year, talking with some of the other administrators around the state. They're kind of seeing the same thing. The same month was low for them, so maybe it's the state's reporting issue and not us. But it is running not as aggressively increasing as it has in past years. So when we get to budget time, just remember that piece of information, and we'll continue to watch that. On the next two pages, then, you'll see our KIP project plan, and then our ARPA dollar projects. A lot of the KIPs are still in progress. On the next page with our ARPA projects, though, you can see a lot of those are closed now. So we're going into the last two quarters. This is reflective just first through the first quarter, since the second quarter just ended a couple of days ago. We'll get that updated here before next month. But really, just two main quarters left, and then all of these dollars will be closed out. So we're working on wrapping up all of those projects. Other than that, are there any other questions from the financial report that I could answer for anyone?
Any questions for county administrator? Supervisor Otino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the ARPA dollars, as we continue to use them up, what effect does it have to the county on employees? Because were we adding any of the employees, I know we did, during that time period, and what happens to them, and now do they become full-time employees of the county? Thank you.
Yep. It's an excellent question. So when employees are hired with grant dollars, and these are basically grant dollars, their position remains as long as we have the grant available. So when the grant ends, and the funding for that position ends, that job ends. And so we have several positions that are ending at the end of 2024, because there is not a funding source moving forward.
Supervisor Hanson?
Thanks. Ken, what's the red ink in public protection, the drug task force, and the K-9, and jail improvements?
Yeah, so it's in the far right, I think it's the page before. If you go back a page, Christine. Yeah. Generally, red ink means bad stuff, that we've overspent on those. And sometimes on KIP projects, we'll run over, it's within a reasonable proportion of the total project course cost. And sometimes on KIP projects, we'll run over, it's within a reasonable proportion of the total project course cost. It's just part of wrapping that project up and getting it done. They tend to offset each other as we go through. But when there's red ink in that far right column, it's because they've run over budget.
Supervisor Swinappole.
On that next page.
Yeah, so back to the next page there, Christine. Hundred and eighty thousand in the red? Yep, scroll down a little bit more.
Right there. You got a hundred and eighty and then it's got red.
Yeah, that one, that's being driven by the formula. So that last line item is our catch-all. So the federal money, all has to be spent by the end. And so the last resolution that you guys had approved for me was, anything left over is going to go to the government center HVAC. I have millions of dollars in costs there. So anything that ends under budget, I reallocate those dollars to the government center project. But really, we budgeted zero there. And so really, the formula error is showing is red, but it's not a bad thing in this case. It's just showing you that those are the monies that have been reallocated from other things to that project. So about a hundred and eighty thousand so far has been reallocated there. And I'll have at least that much again in the second quarter reallocated over.
Thank you.
You guys are really reading this stuff. Holy cow, keeping me on my toes.
Other questions? Okay, we're going to move on to our first business item, an ordinance to repeal and recreate Chapter thirteen land division ordinance. Do we have a motion? Supervisor Anderson? And that would be a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve the new Chapter thirteen land division ordinance.
Okay, and I'm sorry, the second was Supervisor Burning. Supervisor Anderson?
Yeah, so we made some policy changes that are pretty well outlined in the land division ordinance. This has been sent to Builders Association, the Realtors Association and many surveyors in the county. We got comment back from one surveyor and made the changes based on those comments that made sense. We went through it with a fine-tooth comb. I'm not going to read each individual change because it's quite a list. If anyone has obviously comments or questions, we'll answer them at that time. But it seemed like a pretty sensible change that the committee approved unanimously.
Questions, discussion? Any questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the ordinance to repeal and recreate Chapter thirteen. We're ready to vote. Thank you, that's approved unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to our second business item. Resolution transferring general fund unassigned fund balance to the health insurance fund. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the transfer of the general, from the general fund to the health insurance fund.
Motion to...
The motion is to approve the resolution transferring general fund unassigned fund balance to the health insurance fund.
I saw second hand on it, first Supervisor counter. Supervisor Burning?
So this was approved in the admin committee to transfer this money. We had a pretty big hit in claims last year. So rather than hoisting up the premiums significantly on the employees, we're going to transfer this out of the unassigned fund balance because we have quite a challenge coming up this year anyway. So we're going to be looking at what we can do there. And then that's one million of it and five hundred thousand of it is to help kickstart potentially the onsite clinic that we're looking at, which is looking pretty good right now. So anyway, that's what that one point five million is for.
Supervisor Reimer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could somebody help explain to me a little bit more on what an onsite clinic is and how we go about that? If we have the facilities and all that jazz?
Yeah, all that jazz. So an onsite clinic is, basically what we do is we contract with a medical provider, a private party provider, that will have an onsite clinic located within this building. And we have space framed out for that. It was part of the original design of the government center expansion. So it's been planned for years. But that space then, the employees and their families will be able to go into. It has its own outside access, so if they're open after hours or something, it doesn't affect building security. If family members are visiting, they just come into the clinic part. It's down below, in between jail and the sheriff's office is where it's located. So they can come in and they can utilize that clinic.
I'm sorry, can I make a point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you may.
The actual clinic itself is not on the agenda. And so I think it's a little bit, we shouldn't, yeah, premature to actually have a discussion on that item. This is simply to move the money to there in case we kickstart it. We can always move it back. So my point of order is this is a little bit out of line to be discussing this.
That's correct. Since it was referenced, I think a little bit of background is fine, but we need to make sure we avoid discussion on the clinic itself. Thank you.
So to wrap up, so that provides the medical services. Because we're contacting directly, we have a fixed cost for that. So every visit the employees have with our onsite clinic is free for us then, basically. There's no additional incremental cost. But it avoids costs of them going to a private party doctor. If they go to Hudson Physicians or Western Wisconsin Health, we don't have that because we're self-insured. So every doctor visit an employee does, we pay that cost directly. The onsite clinic then provides a fixed cost for all of those doctor visits, provides onsite. So there's some different options of what we're looking at to provide a similar, or at least some additional benefit to people that are located in New Richmond or the Baldwin facility. But the onsite clinic, the bigger part of it, will be located here in Hudson at the government center.
Supervisor Otino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a problem with a half a million dollars being moved right at this point without any more detail than that. You're asking us to just take the money out of this pocket and put it in this pocket. And I, without more information about onsite clinic and how you're going to convince the employees, if they live in Baldwin, to go to that clinic and justify a half a million dollars? I, I'm sorry, with that, the half a million in there, I will not support this. Thank you. Without further information.
Yeah, so the long-term projection of the onsite clinic is that it's going to stabilize our health insurance fund. So we are looking at right now an insurance renewal of twenty-three percent. So that would cost the county two point three million dollars extra next year in health insurance expenses for the employees. So the onsite clinic is an idea we've been working on and we're really excited that we're actually going to be able to start it. Because the case studies we've had from Chippewa Falls School District, from Dunn County, is it stabilizes those spikes up. It'll provide a more stable cost for the county. So it's a long-term financial strategy for the county to stabilize our health insurance costs. The half a million dollars is because of the first year of the implementation. It takes a while for it to ramp up, for it to become accepted by the employees. And so when you look at the fixed cost and the utilization, the utilization will grow over a few years, but that fixed cost is steady. So we project a half a million loss in the first year, break even in the second, and a half a million savings by the third year. And so that's what we're looking at, is make the investment now. It'll pay off within a few years and long-term, it'll stabilize our costs. We don't see double-digit increases in our health insurance premiums.
Supervisor Hanson.
I think the clinic's a great idea. But this resolution doesn't mention the clinic. It just shifts money to make up a deficit in the insurance claims. I think more honest accounting would be to set aside a designated fund for the clinic and a separate expenditure to make up the deficit in the insurance premiums. And we could hold funds for the use of the clinic when that time comes so that we do not set up an intentional slush fund. And I would send this back to the committee for a second reading and let the committee do that work more intentionally.
Yeah, all right. So the timing issue, which is what Supervisor Burning keeps gesturing to me about. So typically, we do fund balance reallocations at the September county board meeting or even the October county board meeting some years, depends on when we get our final audit report. I've done this early because we're setting health insurance premiums at the July administration committee meeting. So I have to know how much fund balance I have within the health insurance fund. And the clinic is a line item within the health insurance fund. So it's accounted for separately, but it's a single line item that we'll track. But it's all within the same fund. A fund is, the nursing home is a fund, the highway department is a fund. It's a way of tracking particular things. Parks are a singular fund. And then we have line items within that for addition, for line item expenses. But back to the point I was making. So we are transferring that money now, so I know what the fund balance is. The fund balance affects what I have to do for premiums. And those premiums are going to be set by the administration committee in July. The administration committee is vested with setting any health insurance plan design. Plan design directly affects the premiums. So I need to know if the health insurance fund has a one million dollar deficit, which it does right now going into it, I need to increase the premiums by an additional ten percent. Not twenty-three percent, I need to go to thirty-three percent in order to cover that deficit to replenish the fund. That's how come we've suggested moving fund balance over so that we can avoid that increase. And hopefully, last year was an anomaly and not a new trend. I guess we'll find out. But we will be having a large increase in the health insurance premium regardless. But this just makes it less than thirty-three percent by transferring it. But that's why we're doing it now, so that the July admin, we can set the premium based upon what the fund balance is.
Supervisor Anderson?
So following up on that, that makes sense. I would like to amend this to be a million dollars and we'll send the half a million dollar part of it back to committee for review so that we still get that million dollar coverage for the immediate need or desire, I guess, to help, so we know the premium increase is limited. But then the half a million dollars, something more specifically calling out the clinic when that part comes up.
I would second that.
Okay, so the discussion now is on amending the resolution, changing the dollar amount to a million dollars from a million five.
I'm just reading over your shoulder.
That's okay. Discussion on the amendment. Supervisor Leaf was the second. You were right next to Supervisor Anderson, so. Supervisor Adams.
And Mr. Witt, could you speak to what kind of timelines? If we do what Supervisor Anderson proposes, is that going to impact the overall process?
Well, part of the plan design includes the clinic. So if we're going to do the clinic at the July admin, I'm going to ask for them to authorize the clinic, which authorizes me then to contract with a clinic provider. So can I run the clinic and just create more of a loss for the health insurance fund without that half a million? I can. I'm just telling you, I'm projecting that we will lose that half a million in the first year of operation. So I mean, we can come back at a later time and do that. The other way to address it though, rather than reducing the dollar amount, is add in the language, in the whereas clause, is that a half a million dollars is being allocated for the clinic's usage. So I mean, there's two different ways to come at it. I can deal with it either way. I prefer the other way. But whichever way you approve it, we'll deal with it.
Anderson?
I guess my intention was, when you go for approval of the clinic, part of that approval would include the half a million dollar fund balance at the same time so that you still have that at the same time as the clinic.
So the, yeah, so the clinic approval, it's going to come in two pieces. One piece is going to be with health plan design. So a health plan offering we're going to provide to the employees will be approved by the administration committee at their July meeting. So the authorization to use the clinic is going to be granted there. The capital improvement part of it will actually be approved in September for the build-out of the clinic. But the cash usage is really the plan design, which is at the July admin. And so there won't be another county board meeting before then.
Supervisor Burning?
So if we do it this way, here's what's going to happen. We're going to go into the administration committee in July and we're not going to have the dollars approved to be able to make a decision on this. Then what we're going to have to do is come back and vote on it again anyway. And that also is we, if as the administration committee, we feel it's the right direction to go into, now we're going into it with a five hundred thousand dollar deficit pending your approval or pending the board's approval. Sorry, I'm talking to the chair. So if we do this now, we separate the five hundred thousand and don't pass it, then we're going to leave the administration committee going, is this board going to pass a half a million dollars to move forward with it? And if we move forward with it, then it comes, see what happens? So that's why we put it on for this agenda. I actually do, I support striking down this amendment and doing the second amendment that Administrator Witt suggested in making sure that if it doesn't get approved by admin, then we send it back or something to that effect. Rather than leave it out there and then have to go through a whole dog and pony of approving this again. So I'd like to get it approved so we know as the administration committee what we're working with. And then we can always move it back if we need to.
Supervisor Leaf?
Yeah, I think there definitely needs to be language about the clinic in here. Because I feel like, why are we, we're in a time crunch and I guess I'm wondering why? Why is it all of a sudden this, I don't know. It just feels like we need to include this language, either strike down the amendment and leave it at the one million five and add the clinic? Because this doesn't tell me anything about that and I feel it should.
Supervisor Shirley?
I would be in favor of adding language into this resolution about the clinic itself. But I think procedurally, we need to vote on the amendment here first and then let's get to that.
The easiest route is to vote on the amendment as outlined in changing the dollar amount. And then if you choose to go back and change the wording, we could do that afterwards. Does that sound reasonable? Any other discussions, Supervisor Burning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Administrator Witt received this information on the health insurance increase, the amount that it was, just in the last couple of months leading into...
Okay, well, sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So I just want everyone to know that this isn't, one, this isn't knee-jerk reaction. Two, this isn't slip something in. It is a good reaction by the county administrator. One, they had been, the benefits department had been looking at this type of plan for a long time anyway. And when the administrator got this news of the massive increase in health insurance premiums, we were able to pivot very quickly because of the work that the administration office had done and admin and the staff prior to. So thank you for doing that. It does seem very sudden and yes, not having it in there, I think is fair to Supervisor Leaf's point. So I think it's good to get this all out here so it doesn't feel like it's just this glob of money being put in somewhere for someone to use for unknown reasons. So I think, can you explain that, Mr. Administrator? What the timetable, like when you got the news and...
Yeah, we'd been projecting all along, if you remember, when we did our budget meeting in May, I think. I had said, you know, health insurance is going to be up like five to ten percent. So that's what we were projecting, is we were going to be somewhere in that. And about six weeks ago, they came back and go, okay, we've calculated, the actuary says twenty-three percent. 23%. They sent it to us at 4:35 on a Friday afternoon. So strategically timed. So we got that information, and we did have to pivot very fast. Luckily, we had all the groundwork on the clinic, because really, the clinic is the saving grace in all this. I know what the premiums look like. It's a big increase, and the employees are going to be paying a lot more for their insurance because of this. But the clinic is going to be the saving grace behind all of it because it provides that low-cost, almost no-cost option for them rather than other options. So in HSA, with an onsite clinic, they should be very good and very well taken care of. But it's because of those two changes in the health plan that are really very helpful. So, yeah, really, the last six weeks is when we've been dealing with this.
Supervisor Hanson?
Yeah, just very quickly, I know I raise the concern about this only because of the disconnect in the language, that it appears without referring to what that money will be used to for in the resolution, that, you know, we just need to make sure. I don't object to the clinic. Heck, when we had the thing listed in the original plan for the building expansion, I was excited about having a clinic. So, yeah, I'm behind it.
He's scratching his back. Supervisor Otino?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. It seems to me that the admin committee is asking us to approve this $500 million transfer so that they can go back to the admin committee and spend the $500 million. That's the way it looks like.
$500,000.
No, what did I say?
$500,000.
Oh. Well, it's a lot of money, anyway.
Either way, it's a lot.
Thank you, thank you. $500,000. It just, I'm sorry, I can't support this without more evidence that it's really going to work. Because you said you used Chippewa Valley Schools as an example, and is there a study or something you referenced to, to say that this is going to be the panacea to help us save money?
Yeah, and I think the admin committee saw a presentation on the clinic at the last admin meeting. So you can go back and watch that video, and there'll be additional information provided in the future on it, but...
And again, we're not discussing the validity or of the clinic itself. I know we're kind of dipping our toes into that water. At this point, the motion on the floor is simply to amend the resolution, changing the 1.5 million to 1 million. I think it's time we should vote on that, and if we subsequently want to add wording, then we could do so. But that is the motion on the floor that we need to vote on. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote on the amendment. Okay, so again, just to, oh, it's working. Okay, so that amendment does not pass, so we're back to the original resolution. And Supervisor Leaf?
I'd like to move to amend the resolution, to add language regarding $500,000 for the, and I don't know how you want to word it, with regard to the healthcare plan, fund, clinic? I don't know, Heather, you probably have a good idea.
Yeah, I think a whereas clause, an additional whereas clause. Whereas, an onsite clinic has a projected first-year loss of $500,000. Yeah, this covers that to allow the clinic to become stable and more profitable as it grows and continues. Something along those lines. Yeah, something very close to that. Heather will write it up, but she'll make it sound better, but...
And without the...
I guess that was the intent, though, is you want to understand that the $500,000 is related to the clinic.
We do need a second. Supervisor Counter?
I'm sorry.
And then, don't we love putting Corporation Counsel on the spot? Let's get the final wording, and then we can have discussion, questions.
This is what I have written. Add a whereas clause before the now-therefore clause to read, whereas an onsite clinic may have an initial loss of $500,000, and this transfer will allow the clinic to be prosperous in the future. And no, that's not what Ken said, but that's what I wrote down.
Financially stable.
Financially stable instead of prosperous.
Supervisor Rice?
I want to make sure I'm understanding this. The whereas just prior to the insert speaks to 1.5 million, so, and then the one after that references $500,000. So do we have to amend the whereas, or do we just, I just want to make sure it doesn't look like we're spending $2 million? And with the right change, I'll second it.
Yeah, I think just the placement of it, maybe put it on line 13 before the last whereas, because it talks about the 1 million loss in the fund, and then we'll talk about the $500,000, and then it says the 1.5 million is the transfer.
What was it?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So the whereas clause would be at line 13, and it would say, whereas an onsite clinic may have an initial loss of $500,000, and this transfer will allow the clinic to be financially stable in the future. And the trans, yes. And this transfer will allow the clinic to be, do you not like that language?
If you just, if you just do, and I think, if I may...
Supervisor Anderson?
Sorry, Mr. Chair. I think, and $500,000 of this transfer or something, so that it's, we're clear that it's that. $500,000 for...
Okay. Do you want me to read it again? Okay. Whereas an onsite clinic may have an initial loss of $500,000, and this transfer of $500,000 will allow the clinic to be financially stable in the future.
Go ahead, Supervisor Anderson.
$500,000 of this transfer instead of this transfer of $500,000.
Oh, that's what I have written. $500,000 of this transfer.
Supervisor Teljon?
Did I miss something, or why haven't we discussed this clinic before this as a Did I miss something in a discussion somewhere?
Well, you know, I think it's been discussed through the Government Center Building Project Plan. Yeah, but I mean, that project plan has been presented to the full board. We've walked through that plan at the County Board. I mean, it's been a footnote within there, but I mean, we've talked through where everything is. I know that's been spelled out that that's where that is within the footprint of the building. Because we've been really planning on this for a number of years now. Even before we did the Government Center addition, we've been talking about an onsite clinic as a vehicle to help stabilize the health insurance premium cost for the county. And so I'll agree, it hasn't been a standalone topic on the County Board floor prior to this. But it's being introduced now and through the KIP, which will authorize the build-out of the clinic space. It'll be an additional voting item for the County Board in that fashion also.
Supervisor Rice?
If I understand where we're at, we have a motion on the floor for an amendment, and I'd like to second that motion. Did it, was it seconded? Okay, all right.
And I believe, wasn't it Supervisor Counter who seconded that?
Lisa pushed the button.
Oh, push the button, okay. Okay, Supervisor.
I guess I'm a little unclear. Has this board voted for the clinic, and is it a done deal? And what we're doing now is approving funding for it?
It is not a done deal. It has two main hurdles yet that needs county approval. One of them is from the Administration Committee to authorize the clinic as a health insurance offering, which they'll be able to do at their July admin meeting. Knowing that the funding is placed helps them with that decision. And then the second piece is the build-out of the clinic, which has to be authorized by the County Board through the KIP. So we're going to discuss that at the July committee, the whole. You'll have a resolution at the September County Board meeting that approves all of those KIP projects. It'll be a line item in there. And then really, at the end of the day, the entire county budget is putting all of these things together. It's putting the health insurance premiums, which are based upon plan design, and it's putting capital projects together for a balanced budget. You're authorizing it at that point also. Yep.
Other discussion on the amendment to the resolution. Okay, we'll do, let's do one final read, and then the vote will be on the amendment to the resolution.
I think I fixed it now that I typed it. Okay. Whereas an onsite clinic may have an initial loss of $500,000, and $500,000 of this $1.5 million transfer will allow the clinic to be financially stable in the future.
Any other final questions or comments? Who are ready to vote on the amendment to the resolution? Thank you. Okay, now we're back to the resolution as amended, as the additional whereas clause was added. Any final discussion or comments? Okay, we're ready to vote on the resol, I'm sorry?
Seconder. Who was the original seconders?
Supervisor Counter.
Okay, again, we're voting on the amended resolution. Thank you. Okay, that wraps up our business items. We're ready for our annual department reports. Treasurer Denise, you're on.
Thank you, Chair Long, and good afternoon, everyone. My written report is in the packet. I don't have anything. I wanted to add to that this year, but I can take questions if anyone has one.
Any questions for our treasurer? You're making this way too easy for us. Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Denise. We appreciate your report. All right, we're going to move on to our second annual department report. Our county clerk, Christine.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have a lot to add either. My report is in your packet. If you all had a chance to view it, there's not much to it. It's all statutory, do the same things all year, every year. But I do, you will see that there's been an increasing trend in the services that we provide with both passports and marriage licenses over the last few years. And if there was any questions about the budget items for elections and the major differences in the years, it's just the amount of elections that are held. Last year, there was two elections. This year, there's four quite large elections, so. Does anyone have any questions? Yes?
Supervisor Adams?
Thank you, Chair. This is a question in regards to elections, and as people register, are you getting all the information you need upstream in terms of citizens applying to vote, and they are in fact citizens?
That happens more at a municipal level. They handle the registrations. We do some relier services for 15 municipalities that the county is a provider for in their whiz vote. I haven't seen anything or heard anything other than that everything's going well.
Other questions for our county clerk? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the exciting portion of our meeting this evening. What's that? What fun, here we go. Review training videos for our new agenda management software. Who's going to handle this? Okay. Surprise.
Yes, yeah, you should be able to. So we're going to play two short videos for you. They're just like one minute and two and a half minutes long. They're training videos on what the new system will look like. You should have all received an email that allows you to log in to the system. If you don't remember that or have never set that up, we can resend you a new email to get there. And then get used to this, because this will be what all meetings from this day forward are used. So this is the last meeting with the old system, the last meeting with these voting devices. All the committee meetings will continue to be voice votes. Some of what you're going to see tonight is the electronic voting. We're still going to use that just at County Board. But watch these videos, and then I guess we'll see where the questions are. We're not hearing the audio, John. They're in a general chair folder, though, so you can get to them from there. All right, we'll restart it from the other computer.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Otino?
Thank you. I would like to know if we could have one of these framed in a case and displayed in the new board meeting room? Thank you. That was, that was my whole thing.
At least for a few years.
This is a quick overview of the Civic Clerk Board Portal. Every user will be provided with their own unique username and temporary password. I have already logged in, so I am on the agendas or the homepage. Before we dive into the portal, we will go to the user menu in the top right-hand corner of the page. When you're logged in, your name will appear where my screen says "System Admin." Under the user menu, there is an option for account settings. By clicking here, you will have the option to change your password at any time. Once we fill out the three fields, we can save our new password to secure our account. The next option on the user menu is email preferences. When this option is selected, we will be emailed when new agendas are published to the portal. We can get back to the agendas page by clicking on the agendas tab at the bottom of the page. Once you log into the site, this is the page you will see first. The agendas will show up as these cards and will be listed in chronological order with the most recent agenda first as they become available. To access an agenda, we are just going to click on the appropriate card. If we are at a meeting in progress, we will have the option to join the meeting by clicking on the join meeting button. Next, we can select if we are present and voting, or if we are a present non-voting member. At the top of the page, we have the option.
Yes, sorry. Present and voting is what you're going to select. Present and not voting, I don't know why they have that. Please don't ever select that. Unless you just want to be at the meeting and watch and not participate. It must, you know, they do this for all municipalities, so that must be a thing somewhere else. I don't know where. But you'll always be present and voting or you won't be present and then you won't click anything, so, because you're not here, so. And this is all web-based, so you can access this from any device, from anywhere. So if you're zooming into a meeting, you're just accessing it from whatever device is sitting in front of you. So again, it's, it's all just a, it's a software program specifically designed and this is what you are seeing specific for the elected officials. Thank you.
Download a PDF version of the agenda or the full agenda packet. If we click on the agenda, we can see it will quickly download. On all PDFs opened in the board portal, we will have the option to annotate the document. If we click on annotate, we can see various options appear. Here we can add arrows to pointed information. We can also highlight. Or add text boxes. When we save these notes, they will be here next time we open this PDF document. My annotations are only saved to my account, so only I can see them. I'm going to exit out of this agenda so we can see other features available to us. Back on our agenda page, we can see all of the sections and items on the agenda for this meeting. We can find out more information about an item on the agenda by clicking on the name of the item. Once on the item page, we can see some basic information about the item at the top of the page, such as who created it, the department, and the recommended action. We also see an attachment list. If we were to click on any one of these attachments, they will open in the PDF annotator just like when we open the agenda. We can see if there are any speakers listed on the right. At the bottom of the page, we have a notes field. Here we can add any private notes. This field is helpful to add any comments or questions that you have regarding an item. If we add a quick note, we will see this page auto-saves as we add content, so no need to find and click save. At any point, we can go back to the agenda by clicking on the agenda details button at the top. Another function available on this page is the flyout menu. By clicking on the three dots next to any section or item, we can see there are a few options for this item. Here we can see if there are any speakers listed. We can also see if there are any attachments on this item, or we can click on review. By clicking on this option, we'll be brought back to the item details page. At the bottom of this page, you will see we can quickly navigate to the previous or next item. You also have the ability to star or favorite an item. This is useful to help remember particular items. If we go back to our agenda details page, we will see that item has been starred. If you do enter notes, you will have quick access to all of these notes by clicking on the notes tab at the bottom of the page. We will then click on the agenda card to see all of the notes for that particular meeting. You can then click on the note to quickly jump to that item details page. That is all we have to cover in this video. If you have any questions, please reach out to one of your administrators for further assistance.
Questions that you've had about the financial report? Have you seen that ahead of time? You can leave yourself a note, you know, flag it so you remember to ask that question then during the meeting. And just you are seeing this. This is from the board portal. There's a public portal one too, that has a lot of the same information. You don't want to do anything out there because that's the public viewing one. But whenever you're in the board portal one, because you're logged in, it's just yours. You own all of that, no one else sees it.
Just a question for Heather. Notes that we make on this, are they available for public records requests?
No, I would say that there is a balancing test argument to not release personal notes that county board supervisors. Now, if a citizen makes that request to you, just contact me and I will help you with that response.
Well, they'd be personal notes, they're only for the supervisor's own use, so.
And notes are not, they're excluded from the definition of records in chapter 19, so they would be excluded and not released.
And I know some of these features are advanced. Not everyone's going to use all of the different features, the text boxes and highlighting and arrows and things like that, but some of you will. And so it's out there and it's available, so it's a much more advanced system than what we have. Sean's looking forward to it.
So I have, I have a question for you. So we won't really have a packet where you'll scroll through things, correct? You'll have business items that if you click on that, you would see the detail, like on a zoning request. You're not going to have to scroll through all that. You would go directly to that item and click on it and it would bring up that background information. Is that correct?
Yeah, it is still a packet that scrolls through. It's just that everything is, you know, fast linked now, so you can click on the agenda item, it jumps right to all those documents.
Or you could look through the agenda packet, the same as always.
Right, yep.
So is, this is for us, but then what does the public, do they see, will there be any difference in the way our meeting notices and agendas are posted on the website or will that be the same?
You know, it looks different, but I mean, it has the same functionality. There's an agenda, an agenda packet that's posted. There's a link for the media, whether they're watching it live or they're watching the recorded version afterwards. That all changes tomorrow, as soon as Adam flips the switch on it, it's going to change tomorrow over to the new website. Yep. And all of the July meetings then, from here on out, are all going to be in this new Civic Clerk. So you're going to see agendas and packets already out there for some of the meetings coming up. I think Community Development's got one coming up that's already sitting out there waiting for the public to see. So same functionality, just a different look.
Supervisor Hanson.
When was the email sent out to set us up as a new user? Has that gone out?
Yeah, it's probably a month ago now.
What was, what was the date? I can't find it.
I feel like it was in May, May 20th.
All right, thank you.
Hey, correct me if I'm wrong, I seem to recall that you told us, "Don't do anything with it."
Yeah. So I didn't actually want you in the system, playing with it until we've been able to clean it all up, so. It's all cleaned up, it's ready now for public view and for your view. There was a lot of test files and stuff like that in there. So we didn't want you seeing all of our workmanship that was not quite up to speed yet. So that's why I didn't want you in there, but yes, that same email will do it. I can go through and I can send you another email right now. I can send those out tonight if you like, so you'll all get a fresh one. And that'll allow you then to log in. It'll be just a password reset email that you'll get from Civic Clerk.
Yeah, good idea. Supervisor Van Summer.
So then, now we can set them up, right? Because before you said not to.
Yep, as soon as you get the email then, you can go in, you can set yourself up and you can start looking at the stuff that's in there.
Because I got the CDC one and I wondered if I could look at it or if I decided I better not.
I think you got it a couple of times probably.
Yeah, yeah. It might take three times.
Yeah, yeah, we were practicing.
Administrator Witt, I could simply just forward the email that I had sent them before, just with that, it has the link on it, they click on it, go to sign in and just reset their password.
Supervisor Lynn, send it was, it was sent May 17th.
Okay, are we ready to watch the next video then?
Yep. All right, the next video will be on voting.
This is a very short video, but.
Hello, today we are going to be walking through how to use the electronic voting piece of the Civic Clerk Board Portal. If you're looking for more information on how to navigate through the board portal, you'll want to watch our board portal overview video. And this piece is just going to walk through how to use the electronic voting portion. When logging into the board portal, we're going to see all of the agendas that we have access to listed here in chronological order. You do have the option to filter these down by clicking on the filter option in the top left corner, where you can search by meeting name, or you can filter down and search by a date range. So you just pick your from and two dates from the calendars provided, where you would then apply and search for that date frame or date range. Here we can see the meeting that we are going to join today, and that's indicated by this join meeting. By selecting the join meeting, it's going to give us a few different roll call options. And because we are using the electronic voting piece today, we're going to want to make sure that we list ourselves as present and voting, and we're going to save that option. Here we can continue to navigate through the board portal where we can view the agenda or packet or individual meeting files. No matter where you're at in the board portal, when a vote is initiated on an item, you will receive the vote for current item pop-up. Here we're going to see the item name, followed by the motion, and then our different vote options. We'll select how we're voting and then save that result. This is going to be recorded on Tuesday.
All right. The approve, and I think where it says what the motion is approved, that'll be the actual motion that you type out.
Correct.
Yeah. So like when we did the amendment tonight and Heather was reading it, we can type that in, so you'll actually see that motion on the screen and you're voting yes or no. But you'll see the language right in front of you on your device, and so you'll know what you're voting on then. If Christine types it in there correctly, I guess.
I'll talk very slow.
Now you are limited to just two amendments in the new system. I'm serious, but.
No one will have to put in their first or second. I will put that in and then.
Right.
End the motion and then it will pop up.
Yep, yeah, yep. So we'll, I think they'll show that, but yeah, so the clerk will still, she'll note the motion and the second, and then you'll just be popped up with a yes or a no vote. But you should see too, that actual motion in front of you, which I think will be very helpful. Oh, I think we have a question, John.
Yeah, I, I was able to log in. I got links for those two community development meetings, but they're broken. The only agenda I see in my profile is the current one.
This one today?
So, yeah.
This July second one?
Yeah.
All right, we'll take a look at that with you right after the meeting, make sure everything's right with it. Yeah.
You should be able to see that July 11th.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it depends on though if you're a board or if you're looking at it from the public portal, because I had checked it too from the public portal and I know it looked fine, so. Yep, we'll, we'll take a look at that, make sure we get that resolved ahead of time. Thank you Sean. All right.
Clerk's end in the minutes module, where if using display pages, they would then be able to display those results within your chambers, whether that be on monitors or projection screen. Those are the steps take, taken for recording your votes within the board portal. Again, if you need additional information on how to navigate through this portal, please watch the board portal overview video. Thanks.
The one we're using now?
Yeah, so the old system, the agenda and minutes were generated through IQM2, which is a Granicus product. The roll call system is separate from that, that's Roll Call Pro. I think it's a tack on or add-on, they're married into it somehow. So that's the system that's going away. We've completely switched vendors. We're going with this Civic Clerk, which is related to Civic Plus, which is our website vendor. So everything will work seamlessly through the county's website with this one. Microphone, John.
So you will need to have a device present with you, so you need to bring your county issued device or your personal device so that you can do your voting. The displays that are going to be in the room are going to be fixed displays that are just have the agenda items and any contributing materials on them for you guys to review. So remember to bring your device. If you don't bring it, your own or the county issued device, we will have some spares in IT and we can give you one right away and just get you logged in. You just need to remember your password to get into Office 365.
Yeah, you could technically do it from your cellphone too, though.
They could do it from their cellphone.
Oh, no, no.
Yep, it's any, any computer and your cellphone's a computer. So it could be done from there, it's just going to be really tiny to see, so.
But it may be, it may be useful for just voting if you get used to that, so. If you don't want to carry a device and you don't have to, I see most people do have a device around them, so.
Supervisor Burning.
What's the URL that we, to be able to log in? Because I'm in Civic Plus right now, but it's just my profile.
I have it in, I have it in a folder.
So she's going to email it to you. And then IT is going to, anybody that has a county issued device, we're going to be pushing out new tabs to you guys. So when you open up Edge, it'll be, instead of having an IQM2 tab, you will have a Civic Clerk tab. And then I think there might even be a desktop icon coming, so. So you'll, on the county issued device, you'll have it. She'll send you the URL via email. You can save it onto your own personal devices if you're using personal devices, create a favorite, add a tab, whatever you want to do there. And hopefully everything works out for you. If not, everybody will be there.
If not, just turn your computer off and restart it. So, yeah. So over the next month, we're going to be trying this out at all of the different committee meetings, so that's our chance really to try it out. The voting part is only at the county board meeting, so you'll all be old pros at it by the time we get to the next county board, and that's the extra step, is the voting part within the system. So, that's the plan.
Supervisor Van Summer.
So how many more hours should we figure for our next meeting? I mean, these have been around since, you know, caveman and they don't work all that well, so. We don't do them very well, so, like.
I'm sure it'll work out just fine.
Okay, any, any final questions? I'm sure that we're going to have a lot of questions along the way, but we'll get all the wrinkles worked out and I'm sure that this is going to be much, much better. So we'll move on. Okay, is there any request for future agenda items? Supervisor Otino.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like a real brief synopsis from the CASA group regarding maybe how many sponsors and participants and how their budget's going forward. I don't, I'm not asking for a financial analysis or nothing, just a brief update to the board because I, I don't think we've had one in a while, so, thank you.
Yeah, we've been doing quarterly ones at Public Protection, correct? CASA?
Go ahead. Yeah, last fall, the discussion came up and it was requested that there be a quarterly report at the PPJ. And we did have a quarterly report in January and we just had a quarterly report in June in our last meeting. And it was a very upbeat report too.
So Supervisor Tino, did you want an additional one here though at the county board?
No, if that's available, then that's fine. I just thought it'd be beneficial for board members, but if we can access it, that's, that's fine. Thank you.
Supervisor Shirley.
I would like for the agenda to add a update from the building committee on where we're at with the addition with change orders, issues, anything like that.
Yeah, we actually had planned on having that on the August agenda, so very good suggestion that we've already taken care of. suggestion that we've already taken care of. Supervisor Burning.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'd like to ask that we put, since we spent a lot of time on this, I think the committee of the whole, this committee, this body deserves to have the clinic, the new potential clinic as a subject item at the committee of the whole meeting. Because I think it's going to take a lot of discussion, so.
And that would be after the administration committee meeting, so the timing should work out just fine to provide an update from the committee. Any other requests for future agenda items? Supervisor Rice.
Hi Chair Long, I had shared with you in a one-on-one conversation, I'd like to see us take a look at the structure that we provide around public comment and revisit that, partly as my thought is to make sure that when people come here, a lot of times I've seen people say they don't know what to do. Here, all the instructions are on the back of the card, so they've filled it out and turned it in, so that's just an administrative thing. But the other thing is to place an emphasis that we're inviting members of our county residents, and what I'd really like to see is not entertain public comment from people outside the county. So, that, you know, we can work out the details later, but that's, that's the thought process I have.
Yeah, I actually had a discussion with the county clerk to reprint these on a full page to make sure that the protocol is available, that probably nobody knows is on the back after our discussion, so thank you. Hopefully that will help. As far as comments from non-county residents, that's really up to my discretion, and I, I think a lot of that will depend on an issue itself. If it's, we only have a couple people making comments, I don't think it's that big of a deal if they're from outside the county, but if, we certainly have a lot of comments, what I need to do is make sure that I announce that right up front, so that only those allowed to make public comment would be residents of the county. I think a very valid request.
Okay, so we don't need it on an agenda in the future?
I don't think we do, but.
All right, that's fine.
Keep me, you know, make sure I'm on task on that.
Okay, will do.
Other requests for agenda items? Okay, seeing none, county clerk's report or any correspondence? None? Any other announcements? Supervisor Anderson.
Yeah, the county fair is coming up in a couple weeks, July 17th through the 21st in Glenwood City, so be great if you guys can make it out there for a day or two.
Supervisor Burning.
Happy birthday to the greatest nation in the world. We're 148 years old.
Two.
142.
No.
What? 248 years old.[1780.33][1780.33](laughter) My God, I feel like I need a musket, right?[1784.54][1784.54](laughter) Thank you. Yeah, that's smart mouth over there. All right, thank you.
Okay, on that note, we are adjourned at 6:28.